I call the planning commission meeting for July 3, 2025 to order and we'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Rosetti?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Excused.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting, June 12, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Abstain.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
On tonight's agenda, we have four public hearings and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishes to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or some people may just have questions and we'll try to get those answers. And with that, item number one on the agenda, we have a conditional use permit to allow wellness coaching and educational workshops as a similar use at 9010 Tyler Boulevard, Unit 7G. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
My name is Karen Haddon, 8189 Plains Road, Mentor, Ohio, 44060. And I'd like to create a coaching and wellness space where I would be working with clients one-on-one as well as in small group settings.
Thank you, Kathy. Oh, I'm sorry, is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Just to make a comment, this is, we consider this a similar use to some of the other uses along Tyler Boulevard, such as the Himalayan Cave, offering wellness opportunities for folks. I believe that Ms. Haddon has a very limited retail component to the use, so I would suggest that that be incorporated into the approval. And there are some limitations on that which are outlined in the condition number two.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Abstain.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda, we have a conditional use permit to allow a personal care service tattoo establishment as a similar use at 7326 Industrial Park Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address. Come on over here, please, and tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
Hi, I'm J. Hazel Krapshaw, 6720 Farming Day Lane.
Could you spell that, please?
Krapshaw, K.R.E.P.S.H.A.W.
Thank you.
I will be doing permanent makeup services, and I've been doing these services for almost three years now, and I've helped a lot of cancer patients and alopecia patients gaining, regaining their confidence back with their eyebrows.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I'll just note to the board that I've been in conversations with the Health District, who also regulate this particular use, and they have no objections, and they have already inspected the proposal and are in favor of the proposal as it has been submitted.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the two conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, conditional use permit to allow a traditional retail shop at 8664 Lake Shore Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Please give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
My name is Dave Babuter. The last name is B.A.B.U.D.E.R. I'm the secretary to the Board of Hannah's Home. We would like to open a thrift shop for the women at the home.
You're gonna have to get right into the mic here, they're gonna yell at me back there.
That better? Okay. Sorry. So Hannah's Home is a Christ-centered maternity home for women in crisis, and many of the ladies lack job skills. We want to provide an opportunity for them to gain job skills, so opening this thrift store virtually right across the street from the home would allow us to provide the women with training so that they're more successful in job skills.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We just have four conditions noted.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the four conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four on the agenda is a formal rezoning of 14.5 acres from R4, single-family residential, to PRD, Planned Residential Development Overlay, at 7260, 7276, 7286, and 7290 Atkins Road. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about the rezone.
Okay. It's, my name is Jeff Smol with 20th Century Construction. My address is 2167 Mentor Avenue, Paintsville Township, Ohio. So our development, we're planning on calling as Legacy Landing. First, I'd like to thank you guys for considering our development plan. And from what I've heard, we have a lot of understanding that there's a lot of concern about in our development and misconception already that's out there, so I'd like to just take a few minutes and kind of back up and just let us, let everybody know the history of how this is coming together and the partnership. So 20th Century Construction and Perino Builders partnered together on this project. We've both been building homes in Lake County and the surrounding area for about 35 years plus. We both pride ourselves on building quality products that add value to the community. This particular project is an Epcun community, and then for those that are not familiar with Epcun, Epcun is a builder franchise in Columbus. They've been doing these types of communities for about 40 years. So the communities are unique in that they let the homeowners age in place. They feature low-maintenance communities, ranch homes, and there's a lot of amenities to the homeowners. They're popular with the empty nesters and residents who have the two-story family homes that no longer suit their needs currently or in the future, but they still want to stay in the city that they've lived for decades and raised their families in. Legacy Landing will be a low-maintenance community. There's gonna be no need for mowing, shoveling, raking, so you can lock and leave, so you get to spend more time with your family, grandkids, activities, social events in the community or the city. Even more so because the HOA maintains the landscaping and lawn care, homeowner yards will always be well-maintained. The community will provide a lifestyle for residents with amenities like a clubhouse, game courts where neighbors can get together and socialize, creating bonds with their neighbors and peers. The home plans offer a large selection of design features like zero entrances, zero-threshold entrances, wider doorways and showers that will enable the homeowners to age in place. From an exterior standpoint, the home plans have options to choose large front porches so neighbors can sit in front and talk with their neighbors, walk in the community. And the houses are gonna be built with natural materials on the outside, they'll consist of stone and James Hardy siding. The James Hardy siding that has a zero flame spread, so if one house catches fire, there's a, is a long lead time before the next house would even possibly even catch on fire. That was a request by the fire department at the time and the building department. So we're gonna build the houses with this James Hardy siding, and then we're gonna have fire-treated lumber on the sidewalls. So this community will also fulfill a senior need, housing need, for the City of Mentor based on the recent housing study and needs analysis. The housing study noted that there was a pent-up demand in meeting senior needs. The study found high demand for lower-density senior housing developments that might include patio homes or one-level townhomes. There is a definite need for this development, and we would be a good fit for Mentor in this location. Legacy Landing will have a minimized impact on the community compared to the traditional single-family homes for several reasons. First, the planned designs themselves aren't gonna use it if the family's with single, with school-aged children. Second, the deed restrictions and bylaws prohibit items like basketball hoops and swing sets, which are desirable for families with school-aged children. The City of Mentor and its residents will benefit from the taxed increased revenue without negatively impacting the schools and class sizes. In addition, traffic studies show the reduced traffic impact as residents of Epcun communities take about 50% less trips per day than the single-family homes, and they're usually during off-peak times. So when people are busy going to work, the downsizer, the person who's retired, is not leaving the house. So while we are asking to approve rezoning this property from R4 to PRD, we will increase the amount of home sites, the community will not be negatively impacted by the, in the school system, and we will bring extra tax revenue to the schools and city and serve a needed manner. Last year, we went through the approval process and we were approved 7-0. However, the city process had our plan go to referendum, and out of almost 26,000 votes, we were short by only 225, 222, less than half a percent of the votes cast. This time, we plan to, we plan on closer personal contact with Mentor residents so they can understand what type of community it is and the positive impact it has for the City of Mentor and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Just go ahead and take a seat, I'm gonna go through a little process here. Is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Is there anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? Okay, I got some here, and I'll just, I'll just call it off. Joe, please come on up, give us your name and address. And everybody has five minutes, okay? Not everybody, each person has five minutes. We're not dividing at all. Okay.
Hello, my name is Joe Camerari. Do I need to spell it?
Oh, we got it here.
Okay. My concern is just the traffic. I know you say that they don't get out early, but some do, some don't. It's just a nightmare now with everything that's going on. I just curious to see how it falls out. That's how it is. That's it.
Oh, thank you. Please give us your name and, name and address.
Good evening, Chairman and City Council Members. My name is Alexandra Alsai, and I reside at 7214 Atkins Road in Mentor, Ohio, 44060, just about 400 feet from the vacant land where the developer is proposing a subdivision with 45 homes and a clubhouse. As many of you know, this particular area already struggles with poor drainage. Existing stormwater systems are insufficient, and adding more impervious surfaces like roads, rooftops, and driveways will only enable additional flooding. Many of us in Kittery Cove already deal with swampy yards, and an additional runoff would flow directly toward our homes, causing long-term property damage. This is a personal concern for me, as I have invested a substantial amount of money into my home over the past six years that I've lived there. I want to know how the city will ensure that the developer includes proper drainage, infrastructure for this project. When I reviewed my own site plans from 1988, when Kittery Cove was designed, I noticed indications of a storm drain and a soil between my property and my neighbors that in reality do not exist. This raises concerns about the accuracy of the planning documents and the follow-through on the infrastructure. It would not be fair to current residents of Kittery Cove, Rain Tree, or even the future residents of buying homes at a top dollar if proper drainage is not addressed, given the known conditions of the land. Additionally, clearing vegetation for development will displace wildlife, pushing animals into residential areas, and increasing the risk of property damage and pest issues, which is already an issue for us in that development. Another major concern is traffic. On Atkins Road, which is a two-lane road that already serves as a cut-through route for speeding drivers, the addition of 45 homes will significantly impact traffic patterns on Reynolds Road, Route 306, and the on-and-off ramps for Route 2, which are already congested. Increased traffic may also delay emergency services and compose other safety risks. Moreover, the construction of a sidewalk along Atkins may seem like a benefit, but residents are concerned that it could invite unwanted foot traffic, loitering, trespassing, and potentially even increased crime in our quiet neighborhood. All these factors, drainage, traffic, safety, and environmental impact could really significantly harm our property values and the quality of life. I understand the development's desire to move forward and make a return on their investment, but I respectfully ask that the city take these concerns seriously. Please consider limiting the number of homes in the development to avoid overcrowding the land. If it's possible to have 25 homes instead of 45 homes, that would be better, okay? It is essential that thorough traffic and environmental impact studies be conducted and that site plans are reviewed carefully and transparently. Ultimately, we all care about this community, and we all want to see, you know, that the development is responsibly designed and constructed, because it enhances our neighborhoods, and it doesn't put anyone, you know, at current, future residents and current residents at Overall, like I said, the drainage in this area, just please, you know, be concise about this, because it is not good for the people who live in Rain Tree and Kittery Cove. A lot of us have spent thousands of dollars on getting French drains and trying to fix, you know, our yards and properties. Just please be sure this is done correctly, if it's going to be done, you know, for the better of everyone. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
That is the next one.
Emily?
She can go over there if she wants.
Please give us your name and address.
My name's Emily Konig. I live at 7732 Debonair Drive in Rain Tree Park, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight. I'm gonna go in my way-back-time machine for a minute and give you some information before Perino and the church got involved. In 1996 or so, my late husband and I were considering buying property in Rain Tree Park. We could see, of course, this tract of land, so we went and checked out the zoning. We were very relieved to find out it was R4, just like our property was going to be R4. We bought the property, we invested in our home, we raised our boys, I'm actually still there. But not too long after our home was completed, word spread very quickly that Lake Tran had purchased that property, and they were gonna build a 750-car parking lot there. And they had the audacity to put forward a traffic study that showed there would be no negative impact on Atkins Road, which I was gonna put in my comedy routine, but it didn't really seem fair. This property, as was stated already, is on Atkins Road, it's a two-lane road, yes, it can be widened, but it's just short of the Route 306-Atkins intersection and the corridor for a lot of commuters coming down Route 306. Needless to say, the neighborhood was not happy. People were concerned mostly about their property values, but they're also worried about traffic. Unfortunately, Lake Tran had purchased the property from Mr. Osborne Senior at multiple times the assessed value of the property, and for some unbelievable reason, did not put a contingency clause in the purchase. So they couldn't get out of the purchase, they forfeited getting out of the deal, they were stuck, and so were we. They couldn't really resell the property, because no one was gonna buy it at that price. So they were gonna just shove the park-and-ride down our throats. Our neighborhood got busy, we attended and spoke at Mentor City Council meetings and Lake Tran meetings and Lake County Commissioners, and we went everywhere. At one point, Lake Tran even sued the City of Mentor to get their way, and City Council actually had our back and not only defended the lawsuit, but also filed a appeal. Time has passed. Shortly after the appeal ruling was due to be released, there was an offer made to Mentor that Lake Tran would put a moratorium on building that park-and-ride lot for 10 years. I suspect we had made a nuisance of ourselves. Now, on 10 years and one day, they could do whatever they wanted. I knew we were gonna lose the appeal, so we took the deal. Within 24 hours, the ruling came down and we had lost, so having the deal in place was a good thing. I also think there was some behind-the-scenes activity going on, and you never know what that is. By then, Lake Tran needed a park-and-ride desperately, they put the one in on Center Street. Lake Tran still has that albatross around its neck, and they've done a really good job at a shell game. They have sold the property to a builder that said they would put in apartments, and then somebody else was gonna punish us by putting a McDonald's in there. And I have no doubt that this gentleman builds a fine community. I'm here again to ask that the Mentor project, in a well-established zone, 30 years, just be left alone? Several of us here made our investments in our homes based on that R4 designation. I suspect my property taxes are calculated on the area in that community. In addition, that Atkins Road property has just been a bog. I understand that there aren't a lot of houses going in, but there are going to be more houses going in than R4, and I don't know what it would do to that. For the folks who are down on Bellflower, who inherited a real flooding problem, I don't wanna see that happen here, and would the builders stay around to help us? I'll just cut to the chase. This property has been zoned R4 for 30 years. It's pretty simple. If I go to buy jeans and they don't fit, I don't buy them. If I go to buy jeans and they don't fit, I don't go back to Macy's and demand that they change the jeans. If you like the property, buy it and develop it. I cannot believe that R4 zoning in this community would not sell like hotcakes. So I'm not feeling too bad here for the developer. Through no fault of our own, this community got thrown into this by Lake Tran, and here we are almost 30 years later. I still look as young as I did then, but I'm still committed to making sure this does not go in if at all possible, and I do thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please come up, give us your name and address.
My name is Frank Lemay, 7119 Atkins Road. I'm about a quarter mile to the west of this proposed site. I've lived at my present home for 50 years. It'll be 50 years this January. I'm probably older, I'm older than all of you certainly, but I may have lived in Mentor longer than some of you have been alive. I wanna give you a little background. When I moved in, Kittery wasn't there, Rain Tree wasn't there, we had 300 cars a day go down Atkins Road. Matter of fact, three years before we moved in, there was a barricade at the Mentor-Willeyby border. That was removed. I don't know if you knew that or not. There's probably a few other things you don't know about the area. But we had 300 cars a day and very rarely anything after 9:00 at night. Now, the last I heard, we were approaching 4,000 cars a day. I might be wrong there, but you can certainly correct me on that. It's constant. I'm an early riser, I get up about 4:30 in the morning, even though I'm retired, gotta get ready to go play golf. And there's some, some cars and trucks that go down the street at well over 60 miles an hour at that time, okay? In the 50 years I've lived there, there has been 43 accidents on that street, two rollovers. Guy hit the telephone pole two doors down from me a couple of years, about a year and a half ago, did $21,000 damage to my house because the electrical panel went out, $14,000 to the neighbor across the street, and the neighbor next to him, $5,000, plus whatever CEI lost on the deal. We used to have ditches, okay? When I moved in, nobody maintained them, front and back. I was foolish enough to start cleaning the ditch in front of my house, and one by one, people started doing that. About 15 years ago, the city put in storm sewers on Mentor, on Atkins. It solved some of our problems, but not all. There's several things that the developer probably doesn't know. Number one, that water that comes from that property all drains to the front ditch, goes west to just about Kittery Road there, Kittery Lane, goes under the road, goes back about 10 feet to the east in a pipe, and then past the Doomont House, I don't know their address, it's a brown cedar-sided split-level home, yes. It goes through a pipe through that to our backyard ditch. Very few people maintain their backyard ditches in our area. I used to do from the sewer outlet at the west end of that ditch up 400 feet, I did four, four houses. I don't do that anymore, I'm getting too old. I'm 82 years old, I'm not getting down that damn ditch anymore. Pardon the French. I am French. It is, our backyards flood already. I meant to, I tried to find a film that I took a few years ago of the ditch when it overflowed in my yard, covered the entire backyard. Unfortunately, it was on my old computer and I no longer have it. Anyway, any more water that goes that direction is going to certainly impact everybody on the north side of Atkins, starting with the Doomont property, down all the way to my property and beyond. It can't handle any more than what it's got. I didn't hear anything about that from the developer, he probably doesn't know that it goes that direction. The third thing I see up there is a retention basin. We already have two on the street, okay? We had one, and then they enlarged it when Rain Tree was put in. We have a very, very large flock of geese and mallards in the area. And guess what they leave behind in our yards and in the street, okay? I'll leave that to your imagination. We can't afford to have another source of water for the waterfall without having it perhaps enclosed in with a fencing. I would also like to see the Kittery and Rain Tree fencing put around there as well. Geese will not leave, use a waterway unless they have access to their feeding area, they lose their flight, feathers during nesting season, and therefore they won't land in there. And it may solve our problems with that. And finally, there's only been one summer in the 50 that I've lived in my house where that area that they're proposing has not been wet. And that was the summer of '88, when we had 39 days of 90-plus temperatures, including three days of 100, okay? We just had the anniversary of the hottest day in Cleveland on the, on the 25th of June, 104 degrees. That was the only summer that that area has been dry. It's wet now. If you go down there right now, you'll see all kinds of tracks that the mower left when they, they cut the area the other day, okay? It actually took them two weeks to get it done, but it's, it's a mess, okay? I can't, I can't see the need for that many homes. You have another property right next to it, another six acres, I believe, that's owned by the corner, the church on the corner there. by the corner, the church on the corner there, different, different denomination. The, they're going to probably want to sell theirs as well and we're going to have even more houses in there of the same type and it's just not feasible. The area has been zoned R4 since the inception of this city in 1963, I believe it was, 63. It certainly has been since I've been in my house in 1976. I've got, I've got 23,000 square feet of property. It's well-maintained and I try to take care of, take care of it as well as I can and the neighborhood as well as I can. So I thank you much for the, the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come up. Give us your name and address. And you have five minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak today. I'm Vincent Misery of 7172 Bunker Cove in the Kittery Cove neighborhood. Lived there my whole life, grandparents, parents, everybody. I, I'm also a City of Menner employee and law student. Oh, boy. Anyway, anyway, it's pretty unanimous what your constituents all agree on, that they just do not want this. And it's not just today. It was in November in a general election and we all came together. This is a democracy after all. And the people spoke. Yeah, it was a narrow victory, but it's a victory and elections have consequences. It doesn't matter if it's a small victory or a blowout. So we came back here on a holiday weekend where they knew not many people would be around and interested in this at all. They won't want to go to the beach in the Outer Banks or something, but here we are. We have to take time out of our busy days to win this fight again. But yet here we are and I'm very proud of, I didn't know who most of my neighbors were, but I'm very impressed of my neighbors and I think you should all, should be too of your constituents. And you owe it to them. You listen to what they say and I'm sure these guys are brilliant behind here, great home builders, but that's just not what your loyalty's to. Your loyalty is simply to your constituents and I'm, I can't wait to meet more of these people and see them walking around the neighborhood and say hello. I can't believe we did this together and we won this, this feat and I guess thank you. And also, this field is beautiful. We don't have much green space left in this part of our near 306 and it's, I enjoy seeing baby deer each June run around and the geese and everything. Is that too bad to hold on to just a little bit of green space in our wonderful, beautiful town? And it makes me feel like the old farm days of this city where it used to just be rural. So for, for me, for all my siblings who wanted to be here and just said Vince, get them, and all my law classmates said, get them Vince, and for all the wonderful Menner constituents who you owe your paychecks to, please, please listen to them. They were absolutely wonderful and I don't have much left to say because they were all great. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this, this, that's all that's signed up, but does anybody else want to speak? All right, come on up. Give us your name and address. And remember, you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name's Mike Madjo. I live at 7597 Kittery Lane. We were here last year and one of our main concerns is the buffer zone. Last year, we stated that we feel that the buffer zone is actually too narrow at 50 feet. I've been in Arburst for 40 years, so when I talk about some of the damage that can be done to the trees, I know what I'm talking about. My concern right now is on the new drawing. It shows that the stormwater drain is going to be in the buffer zone. So my concern is if you're going to excavate to put the drain in, you're going to be damaging some of the roots of the existing trees, which are either going to be the anchoring roots that hold the trees in the ground, or they're going to be the foraging roots that feed those existing trees. If we lose those, we lose not only a curtain that hides us from the new homes, we also lose the potential to keep runoff from soil that's going to run into an existing creek, which nobody else seems to maintain around here, whether it's the city's responsibility or the county's responsibility. That creek really doesn't flow. If we end up getting more sediment that washes into that creek, it's going to raise the level of the creek, which means the water will rise that much quicker and possibly flow into the backyards. So I'd like to know if there's a way that we can keep this stormwater line out of the buffer zone or increase the size of the buffer zone. Because on the other side, on the east side of the development, those backyards aren't very deep. So I don't know why, if those backyards are shallow, why we can't make the backyards on the west side more shallow. And as far as the number, when somebody mentioned lower-density development, well, to me, lower density means less homes. So I mean, if you only did 30, 35 homes, I'd be fine with that. I flash back to the entrance to Lost Nation Golf Course that had houses that were only 12 or 13 feet apart. One of the houses caught fire and both houses on each side of them also caught fire. Even if you have fire prevention ways to build these homes, if I was a person that had a million-dollar home and I want to downsize and come to a smaller home, I'm not going to buy a house that's only 12 feet away from the neighbor next to me. So I hope they somehow you reconsider and not excavate because actually, according to that drawing, you're almost 50% into the buffer zone, which means you're going to be over the crest that we have in our backyard, which means we're going to lose a lot of our screening. I really feel that, you know, Menner being a tree city USA and you guys ask us to maintain our trees and respect our trees, I'd like the, the city to be held to the same standards that it asks its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Please give us your name and address. Remember, you have five minutes.
My name's Brad Smith. I live at 7231 Atkins Road and this is my first council meeting. Thank you for having me. When I seen the signs out that you guys were going to be having this, I felt it was my time to come in and have a few words. I live pretty much across the street from this property and as many people has mentioned here, this is effectively a wetland. Not only can you tell by the species of animal that live in the area, but also if you were to walk out there today, any day recently, the past couple of years, you will need your mud boots every time. Water in the area is a concern. Our back ditch, as my neighborhood friends here have mentioned, is not well-maintained. I wasn't sure if it was my job to maintain, but now that I know, I'll do my part to do that. The soil in the area is mostly clay, so the water doesn't drain off on its own naturally very well at all when we have a heavy rain. So you get standing water everywhere. And if you were to look across, if I stand on my pool deck and I look across to my neighbor's yards, you see standing water in almost every yard for days after it rains, days. Along with the field across the street where they're planning on putting this, just standing water most of the time. Again, mosquitoes, if most of you live in the area, know that mosquitoes are a huge issue for us over there. This retention pond, is it going to hold water the whole time like the field does? Is this going to be a great breeding ground for mosquitoes and other things? And then again with the traffic, although I realize this is going to be a 55-plus community in that they don't drive during peak hours, as this gentleman said. I have a child who crosses that street every day to go to a school bus. There's going to be traffic for the building. There's going to be large trucks. There's going to be slowdowns in the area while whatever gets built there is built. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about my 12-year-old crossing the road as it is right now. Every single day we come down there, there is always a police officer at the church watching for speeders. It's a known speeding area. We already have a lot of traffic there. It's one of the only roads, as you all may know, that cuts over to Lost Nation. It gets used as a straightaway for many different reasons. And I would just really like you guys to take in consideration that we do need more homes, we do need 55-plus communities, we need availability for everyone. I don't think we need properties that are this dense in the area. I think keeping at its current way that it is at would be what's best for all of us. And I think addressing the drainage in the area in general, be it the ditch in my backyard or the ditch along there, would greatly affect the area and my fellow neighborhood friends here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Please, please come up. Give us your name and address. Remember, you have five minutes.
Hello. Hello. I'm Morgan McCracken. I live on 7200 Halls Cove, which is in Kittery Cove as well. We are right across from where that Jerome Road is going to now become a through road there. I have grown up here my entire life. My mom, I live with my mom still, they've been here. They were the second owners of this house here and they put a lot into this property. We are currently and have been, especially like it's been mentioned, the drainage issue has been massive. We have, I believe one of the folks here mentioned it, that we have a false drain in our backyard as well. There's a thing for a drain, it's just a hole that goes nowhere. So the planning that went behind that has always kind of baffled us because we say that our backyard becomes a swamp, a little pond for the ducks. We have a family of ducks that come through daily that like to enjoy our area. So that's something we're currently battling with, trying to put in mulch, trying to put in stones, trying to make our backyard accessible for what we want to do. So that concern of our neighbors, we've also heard in that buffer zone, the green area there, that drainage situation from our neighbors we've heard is non-existent. There's a ditch there that is not maintained, that putting in this amount of area, taking out the green space would be a massive, like it would, sorry, it would very much not benefit our area for our rain there. I'm also a employee at Lake Metro Parks, the Lake County Metro Parks, and we have a lot of green spaces. Menner is probably one of the more lacking cities in our county, but we do have wonderful green spaces. And having been raised in this area, again, to see all the animals grow up, as we've heard, the deer, all the animals that come through, we have tons of animals that come through our backyard and definitely partake in a lot of our greenery and flowers we've put around our place. So now taking away that area that is for those animals would just flood them more into our neighborhood, flood into that area or just become non-existent. Though we do have a lot of deer, over deer population, this would still impact the entire general area. So that, dealing with the wanting to keep a green space for, I greatly appreciate as someone that's been growing up here, I appreciate anything that can stay green and keep our animals around us. I just don't know if, I don't believe that this is the right space to put this type of neighborhood. And me and my family, we agree that we'd like to just stay, like to see this stay as a green space and just maybe find other places to put these needed things or put more research into what we are putting here. Thank you for my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Please come up. Give us your name and address. And remember, you have five minutes.
Hello. My name's Matthew McCracken, 7200 Halls Cove. Again, really close to this new area. I'm not here to say anything new. I'm here to just reinforce that I'm another person disagrees with this. As the other gentleman said very clearly, very plainly, this lost in a general election this year and it doesn't matter if it's a half a percent or if it's 40%. The public spoke and this doesn't belong here and I'm just here to say that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? This public hearing is closed. The applicant can come back up. So let's, let's touch base on, I, I wrote some notes down there, traffic, drainage, environmental impact, retention or a detention pond. I think there might be a little confusion of what that is. And the buffer zone with the stormwater and the trees. So if you could touch, I'll kind of cross these off as I go.
Yep. This is Polaris Engineering.
Please give us your name and address.
Sam Vitale from Polaris Engineering.
Let's go right down the line here. Traffic.
Traffic. I guess, I believe we have done a traffic, not an impact study, but a trip generation. And through the course of our trip generation study, we have shown that basically this study has proven that a full in-depth traffic study doesn't need to be performed based on the number of trips taken per day. We have assessed that the type of people who will be living here are going to, not going to have as many trips per day as, as like a, a single family, you know, with kids. And as I know Jeff had mentioned, people run into school, people go in other places as such, usually people in the 55-plus age range typically don't leave their homes on those peak times or as frequently.
Thank you. Kathy, do you want to talk a little bit about traffic as well?
I have, I have no comments. The, the traffic was evaluated by the engineering department and they had no additional comments at this time.
Okay. And drainage?
Drainage. So.
And, and touch base on the difference between a retention and a detention pond at the, in the.
Absolutely. So with this development, we're planning a detention basin, which is, this will be a wet pool, wet extended detention basin. So it will retain or detain water at full times and the water level will raise and lower based on the amount of stormwater that enters the, enters our stormwater basin here. We are.
Hold on one second. So is it, is it the type that in a heavy rain, when the storm wa, when the storm can't handle it, it raises? And then as the storm ends, the water is held in this basin to slowly go into the stormwater?
That's correct.
The, the storm pipe in the road. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Exactly. Yes, exactly. So all the water that is going to travel to the storm basin through storm sewers, all these lines and I guess squares you can see on here represent inlet basins, all that travels into our pond here. It then raises, it detains that water and what we have is an outlet structure on the outlet end of it and most of that water will, most, all of that water will leave through a three-inch pipe, a three-inch orifice, and then that will be released into the city storm sewer at the same rate or if not less than what is currently going there today. And that's all done by codes and rules set forth by the city as well as the Ohio EPA.
So in theory, that will be dry. If you, if we didn't get any rain for a week, in, in theory, that would be dry, right?
Well.
Or is it going to hold water?
It's going to hold water, yeah.
All the time.
So it'll, it'll be like a pond. Perrino is, usually he's really big on fountains or likely be a fountain there, kind of a visual piece to it.
You got to get into Mike though.
Yep. I lived in Willoughby and I lived right behind a pond, very similar to this. We put fountains, like Pat said. Water shooting up, it, it really aeriates the water. It kills a lot of the mosquitoes that would become if the water was just sitting. They put lights on there so they're attracted to the lights, mosquitoes come in there and then they, they kind of kill them. So this will be actually not only, it'll be a functional, but it also is going to be, you know, really beautiful.
Environmental impact.
Environmental impact, that's a great question. I don't believe there's been a wetland study on this. I know that's part of moving forward, that is, it's something that happens with every development. You have to do an environmental study, look at the wetlands, you know, determine what type of wetland impacts, if there are any on the lot, that'll be done with the final development plan.
And Kathy, do you want to talk a little bit about that? About what the process is? Sorry.
If, if this were to move forward and if, if, if they were to receive approval, there would be a final development plan review process, which would go through full engineering, full construction drawings, as, as he indicated. It would also be applicable, any, any Ohio EPA regulations, all regulations with regard to drainage, grading, stormwater, anything with regard to that would be reviewed in full at the final development plan stage. It is not required at this stage because they don't have approval and those plans are obviously very costly. So the final development plan stage will indicate what is on site, what can be, what, what is, they're limited to from any kind of impact standpoint and what can be mitigated.
Thank you. And the one gentleman talked about the trees in the buffer zone? The stormwater pipe that's going to be installed and, and, and tree, and the canopy and the tree roots? Talk, talk a little bit about that.
Correct, yeah. So, you know, as part of the final development plan, you know, that's yet to come, you know, we have to essentially capture if not all, but majority of the water that's being generated by the impervious area with this development. There's no really way around it, you know? If you get, we have to capture this water, put it into a storm sewer, you know, get it over to that pond. So it's kind of a double-edged sword in my opinion to where, you know, we, we do want to preserve and save as many trees as possible, but we also need to incorporate drainage here so that it doesn't negatively impact our fellow neighbors. So with the storm sewer, I believe the gentleman mentioned, you know, adjacent to the Kittery Lane, you know, we do have that shown in the buffer zone. we do have that shown in the buffer zone. And I don't know if this is, you know, something that it would like, I mean, we'd likely be fifteen, maybe twenty feet tops of tree clearing that would have to occur in that area to get a storm sewer through there to capture that water. I know in the past, on other developments that I've worked with on Pat, he's been, you know, very big on landscaping. So, I guess I can't necessarily speak for him, but I guess it wouldn't be out of his nature to provide, you know, buffering, additional landscaping on his behalf to try to solidify this buffer, you know, and, and keep some separation from our neighbors, so that we don't have to look at each other.
So, right now, from some of the people that spoke, is they get runoff from this property into theirs?
Correct.
So, this parcel, are you, are you saying you can trap all this water on this parcel? And not have any runoff, would that be go westbound into, into the Kittery? You're, you're gonna trap it all?
We're, we're gonna trap as much as we can, you know, as much as, as, as possible.
What does that mean? What is it?
I mean, I, I guess, to not get into complete specifics, but, you know, we, you know, at the end of the day, it comes down to grading. You know, we'll do our best to make, to capture every, you know, every drop of water. But, you know, there are some areas that, you know, you're not gonna be able to catch the water that's at the top of the ditch flowing into the ditch. You know what I'm trying to say?
Yep.
But, any area that we're disturbing, we, we will capture.
Kathy, could you talk a little bit about storm water management and what some, what some of our requirements are?
Well, no, I'm not the engineer for the, for the city, so I, I'm, I'm not gonna speak to the storm water specific regulations that are required. I can at least speak to the buffer requirements that we have, that is in the, that is in the zoning code. They will be required to maintain the buffer, anything that has to be removed would be required to be replenished and replaced. So, when we have a buffer of this nature, we do require additional landscaping be provided if anything is removed. Our landscape architect on site has looked at this particular area, has walked the area when it was proposed for the church. And there are, there is some, of course, some debris, damaged or dead debris that would need to be possibly removed. But, again, the, the intent of the buffer zone is to replenish anything that is removed.
Thank you. And then, could you speak a little bit about the rezoning process? And where we go from here? And then, Joe, I'm gonna lob one at you, if you could, after Kathy's done, talk a little bit about property rights and why are we back here? Right? Right? We already had it, we already had a vote, so why are we back here? So, Kathy, if you could go first, please.
So, with the rezone process, and because this is a proposed plan development overlay, this will go through, at this particular preliminary stage, this is a planning commission. And then, it will go for a public hearing at city council after your recommendation, yours is only a recommendation. City council makes final vote. And if approved, then that would, again, be placed on the ballot, the next available ballot for voter review. If it were to move forward, following that, the final development plan review process for a plan development overlay also is subject to both planning commission and council review again. So, there'll be multiple times that this gets seen and gets reviewed. Even after all of that happens, if it gets approved, final construction plans and so forth go through an additional engineering review. So, there's many opportunities to make sure that the proper grading, proper storm water, and all of the proper management of the site is put in place and won't be approved until it is accurate and meets the minimum regulations.
Thank you. And Mr. Zeeman, on the property rights and why are we back, and we already had an election, that question seemed to come up a few times.
Certainly. Well, that is, there's no prohibition either in the charter or the code from a property owner, again, seeking a change in zoning, it just doesn't exist. So, the property owner is free to make a subsequent application after it having been defeated at the last general election. Very often, we've seen instances where a new, a new proposal comes forward, some changes are made perhaps to, to, to address issues and concerns that, that may have been identified on the last go-around. But, the bottom line is, there simply is no prohibition against seeking another, re-seeking the request.
Thank you. And is there anything from commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Dave?
Kathy, this is for you, just to clarify. If this were not approved as a PRD and remained as single-family, a lot of these same issues we'd be talking about, drainage, retention, detention, all that stuff, would just be surrounding less buildings, less houses, correct?
Yes.
So, it's not the number of houses here, the issues don't go away, I guess, if construction happens in this area. They still have to be addressed in the planning, in the engineering, and that type of stuff. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman? I think one of the other con- that I hear quite often, including the last submission, is the actual traffic on Atkins. Is, do we know if there's any, whether it be future, even if it's this portion to the east from this development to Reynolds Road 306, is there any chance of widening or future plans for that that would relieve maybe even just a traffic, let's call it a turn lane, that would maybe mitigate some of this traffic?
You know, certainly, if, if the engineering department feels that that is necessary, they always make that recommendation. That recommendation hasn't been made at this time. I guess it could be asked again when the engineer, city engineer is in attendance at the city council public hearing. I can also follow up with him and ask that question. But, when, whenever he reviews any aspect of a plan and reviews the trip generation, that's the first thing he's looking for. Is there a need for additional lanes? Is there a need for widening? And does it have the capacity? Is there a need for additional traffic signals, et cetera? And at this time, it did not, it was not deemed warranted.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like that from the traffic study with this use, it wasn't warranted, so, well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hammond?
Sam, just on the drainage part, just to be clear, you can't discharge more water than what's being discharged now, correct?
Correct.
So, that's, I think that's some of the concerns with it.
Yeah.
You're not gonna increase the tra- the water, it's gonna be.
The water will remain the same.
Equal or less than what? Okay, thank you.
Equal or less.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cogger?
This is questions for the administration, I guess. Is there any timetable, like, if, if the property owner wanted to reapply for this, like, did they have to wait a full year? Is that, is that part of the deal now? If, if this was voted down back in, in, last November, could they have put it on the, on the, or election we just had in the spring, the primary? Would that have been possible, or is there a timetable here?
It is possible, yes. No, there is no one-year specific time limitation on reapplication for a rezoning specifically.
Okay. And then, this question's for Kathy. Is this, is this the same presentation, is this the same plan we saw last year? Are there any, any changes to it from what we saw and approved last time?
I think, I believe the only change was actually that the open space is a little bit larger. But, there, otherwise, there, the density has not changed, the buffer has not changed. Everything that was in place last year is what is being proposed at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dideman?
Sorry, Kathy, this one's for you, too. We got an email from somebody who lives in Kittery that couldn't be here tonight, and she had mentioned the connection between the two developments. Can you explain why that's important?
I'm just going to, just read for the benefit of everyone here what was in our staff report. Yes, there is a connection to Jerome Drive to the west. This interconnection allows the subdivision to comply with our subdivision requirements. And prohibit, prohibits, which prohibits permanent cul-de-sacs from exceeding six hundred feet in length and requires this interconnection. The interconnection is something we require and promote with any development. It is also the most common thing that we hear pushback from. But, promoting the interconnection is for safety purposes and safety vehicles for, for access. So, we always want to encourage that interconnection. And we would note that Jerome Drive, when it was actually constructed, the necessary utilities were already installed within the right-of-way in anticipation of a future correction, connection. So, it has been planned this way since the seventies, when the neighboring property was rezoned and the Kittery Cove subdivision was subsequently developed.
Thank you. Kathy, do you want to talk about the housing study a little bit, and, and, and just where we are at the city? And I know that we did a pretty extensive housing study, and I think it'd be pertinent if you talked a little bit about it, please.
So, in 2024, we completed a housing study and needs analysis. We examined the city's housing stock and highlighted the housing deficiencies that have been created in Menor over time. Houses and lots are often larger than needed as children grow up and move on out of the home. Newer housing options with less maintenance for seniors or empty nesters is, is absent in Menor. We do have some condo developments, we actually calculated, we have about twenty-five to thirty condo developments in the city of different densities and so forth. But, the majority of them are quite old. So, we don't have a newer option for folks within the city. The housing study recommended, one of the, one of the most predominant housing types in the city is single-family. We are, we have them in, they're very plentiful. We have, that is our predominant housing type in the city. So, what the study recommended is that, that we address the needs of three submarket populations, the changing needs of existing residents, area workforce, and younger residents today and tomorrow. So, one of the things that also came out of the study is we are probably one of the oldest average age populations in the county. And part of that is because of, of some of the absence of different housing options for people to come in. I can speak to myself who lives in, in the city of Menor, and I'm in a subdivision. People have been in the homes for many years, and I hear the same thing over and over again, is, is, well, number one, they don't feel that they have another place to go, and they maybe want to stay in the city. Their house is paid off, and they're just staying in place, but they have a house that's too big. They don't necessarily want to maintain their lot, their lot anymore and maintain the yards. So, you're not getting the turnover of the homes for, say, younger families coming in and maybe occupying these homes, even if they need some remodeling, that you once saw. That, that number has gone down, and this is not a, just a city issue, this is a national issue. There's a, there's a housing, housing issue, again, across the United States in varied, in varied ways. So, this was an important study for us to look at. We are now entering into a comprehensive land use plan update. And we are looking at the zoning of properties across, across the city. And certainly, we don't want to upend and start rezoning everything. But, we will be evaluating the practicalness of some of the zoning that's in place. And does it allow us to grow as a community and allow for new, new families to come in? And so, those are some of the things that we are gonna be looking at. So, we do take this very seriously. I know our office does, and we're very excited about the project. So, I, I just, I guess I would just like to emphasize that, you know, the planning and zoning of the city is something we don't take lightly, and we do care about it. But, we are trying to be realistic to what are the needs of existing residents and future residents. And so, that is why one of the outcomes, and one of the recommendations of the analysis was to encourage some alternative housing options, which means dense, more density and means smaller lots.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Dave?
The, I guess it's to the south, there's that triangle plot there. We talked about that, I remember the last time, and I don't recall what the answer was. Is that your property, or is that now landlocked for some other owner?
I think, I'll, I'll just speak for Pat, 'cause Pat's the one that reached out to him multiple times and cannot get ahold of the guy. We've had title companies search him, he doesn't respond. We've had no luck, basically. But, we would, we would have loved to incorporate that into the plan, but just no luck.
The one parcel that Larry's just, is selecting actually was purchased by somebody on the adjoining street. So, that is now, that is theirs, and, and last year, it was not in their name. So, that is a change from last year.
That triangle still exists.
Yeah.
With a potential of somebody wanting access to that. Which would require an easement, or a drive, or something. So, it just seems like.
Yeah, we could put an easement there. Yeah, we could, we could, we could put an easement connecting that.
An easement would be, well, you can't give an easement if you don't know who the owner is.
Well, I think they know who the owner is, but I think, again, the issue is, is now that there's a parcel in between that is owned by somebody else.
Yep.
Yeah, that ship sailed. Is there anything more you'd like to say before we call?
I can say is, we, we have a development in Canterwood on Concord. It's fifty-five-plus community. The residents, the people that are moving in love it. We have monthly events, just so we get the neighbors to know each other. We have like wind-down Wednesday, breakfast with the builder, coffee and donuts. So, we get the residents, most of them are probably, there's a few that are in the fifties, but most are in the sixties. A lot of them do know each other through loose connections, but we get them together once a month just to introduce them and just make the camaraderie and those connections. So, we really try to make this a community of people. So, once, we didn't get the clubhouse in in the first phase, but we're gonna put it in the second phase. It's on the corner, it's showing as dirt right now. We just broke ground on it. But, that's usually where they're gonna have all the events, you know, get-togethers, poker nights, crafts. Just so people, I think, as they age, and, you know, they, if they're retired, there's not as many things to do. They get to commingle with other active adults that are their age and things in common. I think socially, it's, it's, it's great, 'cause everybody that's, that's lived in there now is like, oh, yeah, I'm going over there for co- you know, we're gonna meet tomorrow for coffee, we're gonna stop over. So, it really is a, a neighborhood with a community feel to it. That's, that's the feedback we've been getting so far. We're about seventy percent sold out, about forty percent houses built, people moved in. And we just put in phase two, and we've already sold about eight or nine lots in that phase. So, it's, it's, it's going well. The house, the houses are beautiful, we use the hardy siding. You guys can, you guys are more than welcome to drive by. We have model hours, you can see the, the houses and see what they look like. You know, actually, we, we, we have that invitation out to anybody that wants to come to our development and see the houses. So, that's all I really have to say. Thanks for, thanks for your time, and if you have any more questions?
Thank you. Is there any more questions?
Mr. Chairman, one quick question for Mr. Small. The community you have in Concord that you were just talking about, is that an EPCON community as well?
Yes, yes, it is, sorry.
So, so, the designs would be very similar to that, and it looks like, just from, from seeing these images, that they're very well-designed, detailed. I, I think that's part of, when you do a successful community, that you want to have that as well, because that just brings better.
Yeah, so, EPCON, they have, they're in thirty-four states, so they've built over thirty-five thousand houses. So, these houses have went through iterations and tweaks and changes.
Well-designed.
And they're well-designed. You walk into the living room, you look out at the side court patio, it feels like you're part of the house. It really does. It, it's really nice and bright in there. Anytime people walk in, they're just like, they're pretty much like, wow, it's, this is what I'm looking for. Anybody that's looking to downsize and get in that type of community, it, it really is, kind of hits the spot. And it is, and they are nationwide for a reason, as Kathy mentioned. And it is, and they are nationwide for a reason, as Kathy mentioned. There is a big need for this everywhere. Pat has one in Sheffield. We're working with Bainbridge Township on one out there for 78 lots, Broadview Heights possibly. But, yeah, all in the area, and there's actually one in Fairlon as well. There was a 90-lot development in there. Just, the houses are beautiful, and the neighborhood is just spectacular, so.
And I would think that would be a big draw itself, just because you already have a housing stock that is proven, so.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, these were, you had them through the last winter. So, how many people here, because I remember the first time when Mr. Perino was here, he said a lot of people are empty nesters, and they moved to Florida for the winter. So, what was that like in the wintertime? What did the Concord place?
Well, they, well, I should say, in the beginning part, we were kind of not built, so they were gone most of the winter. But I would say, not everybody's a snowbird. I would say, some people leave a month, some people leave two months, like a vacation, but they have more time to go away. But we still have the events that people came to. There are still people around, it's just sometimes it's hit or miss. You know, they're gone this month, but back next month. So, typically, they're not gone most of the winter, but I can't speak to every snowbird.
Right. And I know this is Concord, but what was the traffic like on Hous? Because that's the main...
Yeah, the traffic, we did a traffic analysis, I don't think you were part of that, traffic analysis, it was fine. It met, we, no need for a further traffic detailed study. Like we said, the traffic coming out of these developments is like half of a single-family, because they just don't, they're not making as many trips, there's not buses coming in and out constantly, there's not people dropping off for practice. You just don't have that in these types of developments. And usually, their peak time of travel is, you know, not rush hour. They're not leaving at 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning to get to work. They're leaving at 9:00 or 10:00 to go to the grocery store and then come back home before it's 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock. That's the typical pattern. Now, is that everybody? No, it's not everybody, it's just, that's the majority of the people, the residents that live in these communities.
And the majority of the people buying these, are they local? Concord, Mennor, Painsville Township?
The majority of them, and a lot of them move back, if they're away, they've been here before, to be near their grandkids, to be near the kids. A lot of the residents, I would say probably 70% are from the local area, and some of them have been away and then moved back, and that was, you know, a good fit for them. So...
Thank you. Is there anything else? Anything from administration? Good?
No.
With that? And this is just a recommendation to City Council, and they'll have their own public hearing. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion for a recommendation. If you want to just do the rezoning, one through, you want to do them all at once? Preliminary site plan and rezoning conditions?
Mr. Seaman, how do you prefer they do it?
Yeah, one vote or two?
Well, because it's a overlay, the development plan needs to also be a component of the rezone, so...
One single vote.
If the commission's comfortable doing that, you can, certainly, yeah. Just as long as it's clear, you're voting to both recommend rezoning and whatever conditions, as well as a preliminary plan, and whatever conditions the commission wishes to recommend.
So, it would be 18. Guys, one vote or two? I'll entertain a motion.
Well, let's break it up into two, I think. Do one and the other one. Recommend to the rezone with the seven conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
No.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion on the site plan.
Recommendation for the preliminary site plan with the 11 conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
No.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Under Old Business, item number five is to remain tabled. Kathy, you had some sort of communication, could you just speak on that a little bit?
This is for the car wash, I'm sorry, yes?
Yes.
Yes. They asked for additional time as they continue to review the traffic questions that were raised by the engineering department.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to remove from the table amendments to the Mennor Code of Ordinances.
So, move.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Abstain.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
So, we've all had this for a little bit of time now. So, what I think we should do is kind of go through this page by page and share some different ideas that we all have and some discussion, and add, delete, or whatever we think, and just kind of go through it page by page, and just, and if we have any questions, we'll ask Joe. Mr. Seaman?
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, the last time we discussed this, we tabled this on the recommendation of the law to wait until what Columbus does. Why are we taking this time to do this now unless Columbus has changed and ruled on this?
No, again, my recommendation isn't binding on the commission's action. If you want to, you know, review this matter, it's absolutely your discretion to do so. Just, you know, just be aware that Columbus may or may not do something. It is, it does seem to be lingering in committee for whatever weight you want to give that fact, but, again, it's a commission's discretion, and, you know, we've done a little bit of work. Obviously, I think the more discussion that takes place, the better. The commission's in receipt of a confidential attorney-client communication relative to a memo on some legal issues that have been raised. Hopefully, that's a valuable resource to you. But that's the type of thing that by getting a little discussion, my office, planning, or whatever appropriate department can provide you appropriate feedback.
Okay, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think also, before we move forward, it's, we have two, let's call it, options for consideration. It seems that one is more of a permit type of a verification with fees and definite things that they would have to adhere to in order to, A, either reapply or get their permit for future, as well as the second draft, which is, the short-term rentals would be upon application and then approval by CUP. My thoughts on that second draft with the CUP, it would seem that, and I don't know whether they're just not in here, but that is, seems like more of a, let's call it something that might be okay for a small community, and it doesn't seem like there would be fees and time limits and things like that adhere to that. So, that one seems a little bit more, let's call it whimsical, if you will, versus the other option, which is the first option, and that is definitely more of a fee-driven and certain specifications that the applicants would need to do. So, I think that one in itself would fit Mennor better, in my opinion.
Thank you. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Crocker?
I would agree with Mr. Perkovich. I would say that the permit-driven version is something that I think that would suit Mennor better. I think we have a professional department that handles these kind of things, and I think that they would do an excellent job handling those permits, and so I think that's the direction we should go also.
So, do you guys want to go over, are we okay with kind of going over this one here and just kind of get some open dialogue here? And maybe we have some open dialogue, we come up with some things between us and get a rewrite and possibly table this again, and get a rewritten one in front of us and get it up to City Council, because they're ultimately going to decide?
Sure. Well, and I think one of the things that has come up in discussion is the capacity limits that has been proposed. And I think we'd like to do, the administration would like to do a little bit more of research on the rationale behind that, so that we have appropriate backing on how that would, is justified for the city, and so that it's appropriate that we just don't come up with a random number.
Right.
And we have some validity to that number. So, we would like the opportunity to just explore that a little bit further. We do, we don't want to delay too long, but we would like that opportunity to look into that a little bit, a little bit further, and provide you with a specific recommendation, again, with some rationale behind that.
Thank you. So, page one, does anybody have any concerns with, questions, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, we're not looking at wordsmithing this right now, we're just looking at clarifying comments, questions, those kind of things.
Really, Dave, anything?
Okay.
At this point.
Correct. And again, I think, as we hear from, in a public setting, as we must, the collective issues and concerns of this commission, again, we're able to then be more targeted in our responses. Obviously, some of the feedback relative to it being a conditional use permit application process versus a purely administrative permit process is extremely valuable moving forward. Obviously, there's been no vote or final decision, but just hearing those comments, obviously, it allows the legislation to get tailored much quicker and in a more appropriate way relative to the ultimate recommendation of the commission.
Okay, any, anyone who, do you want to take off here?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Crocker?
Under definitions, item D, the term caretaker, I found that a little odd. I was, I'm not sure if that's like the industry term you would use. I would prefer something along the lines of maybe owner, or host, or manager, or something along those lines, if that could be a change we make. I know we're not going to do each line by line, that just seems strange to me.
Easy enough to come up with property manager or something of that nature. I think the focus, though, is because these homes can be owned by out-of-state interests, out-of-area interests. The ability to have a local manager available, should there be an incident or something of that nature, emergency contact information can be a critical item. And so, you'll see that as fairly standard, I think, in the vast majority of the short-term rental codes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on page one? And then Kathy, you talked a little bit about the capacity and ratio and guidelines, that you want to work on that, a formula and how you come up with per ward or per city.
Yes.
That's something that the city wants to work on.
We would like to explore that a little bit further, again, just with some rationale and validity to the particular numbers that we choose.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, page two?
Yeah, please.
Item H, under definitions. I just have an issue more with paved driveway, that implies asphalt only. I think improved surface is probably more the appropriate term, because that would allow gravel? No, it would not?
We don't allow gravel.
Okay.
In the city, it's already a regulatory, yeah.
Okay, but still improved, within the, does the city define improved, an improved surface, or is paved considered asphalt and concrete?
We could say an improved driveway, if you prefer.
Improved, not approved?
No, sure.
Yeah. I think that would be more...
It could just say code compliant, for example.
Code compliant, yeah.
I think there is a provision for permeable pavers as well in the code now, so, yeah.
Code compliant.
Okay, thank you. And then, while I have the floor, I'll take item L, the short-term rental host. Again, talks about hosting platforms and other medium for advertising, and I would assume other medium would allow like an internet one-to-one type thing as well, if an owner was doing this all on their own. Yes, okay. Nothing else on this page for me?
One, one thing that stuck out a little bit, and I don't know how much this would come in, is that if somebody had a, if somebody had a permit for a short term, like they owned a house with the permit, and it was all, everything was in good standard, there's no issues, but they had bookings that were past the permit date. Like, let's say, what was the permit was, I don't know, end of December, but they had bookings for the next year, March, April, May, and if something was to happen, like somebody died or somebody that owned this, would, is there a way, and then that house was sold and still was a short-term rental, is there a way that they would still honor those bookings that, I'd hate to see somebody plan their, plan to come in, and all of a sudden, something crazy happens, and it's like they didn't get their permit or something. Does this make any sense, what I'm saying?
Well, obviously, that's something that, in terms of offering them for rental, they would have to not accept such reservations past either their permit expiration date, or certainly, if the property changes hands, the permits would not be transferable, that new owner would have to come in and reapply. And so, that's just going to be something that, as a business owner, they're going to be mindful of. Should they take a booking and cause someone some type of economic harm by doing so, that's a civil matter between them.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else, page two?
On that same subject, if I may, I had that same concern. It's very clear that the recommendation is that the permits would renew on January, or on December 31st. They would have to be renewed by year-end.
Have to be renewed, yes. Well, before, actually, before the year's up, they would have until, I believe we have until beginning of December. So, they actually have to do it in advance.
So, we may want to consider a one-month, three-month buffer period, because if you book for New Year's Eve, you're technically into the new year before you've renewed, unless you renew early, I guess. But, I mean, I mean, I'm getting nitpicky here, and for every rule we put in here, we could come up with a what-if type thing.
Correct. And that's where, you know, you can't, you know, until you got all the pieces out on the table, you can't put the puzzle together. And very often, writing these types of regulatory codes is exactly that type of process. You've got a lot of pieces, and you have to sort of sort them out and get your picture done. So, part of that is perhaps a function of there being a limited number of permits. If there are more permits, that ultimately is what the code would permit, then perhaps, rather than having a specific application deadline, you develop, you know, just a lottery system out the gate. Once they're exhausted, they're exhausted, but as new permits become available as a result of individuals not renewing them, perhaps losing them as a consequence of some type of violation, properties changing hands, for example, and therefore becoming available again, there may be an additional lottery. So, it may, again, we're getting way ahead of ourselves perhaps, but it may be a situation that periodically throughout the year, new permits would become available, and so you'd have an annual permit, but it may not expire at a specific date. Again, that's not as proposed, but again, that may be something that, is how things flesh out ultimately. But I think part of it is, it's, you know, if there's a very, very finite number of permits, then that probably produces one type of outcome relative to their issuance. If there isn't that finite of a number of permits, in theory, there doesn't have to be any limitation on the number of permits. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, you know, that's certainly something that can be discussed as well, that you've got perhaps a very, very different outcome relative to how they get, when they get issued.
But I guess on that same thing is, I'm going, I read that on the position of, if I were an owner and I had bookings into the new year, I would make sure that I renewed in time, or I would apply for renewal in time, is probably the right.
One would think, correct.
You would think, yes. Or I face the consequences. So, okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Are we on page three now?
Mr. Chairman, I can go again.
There, let's go. Jeff, I mean, Dave?
Items.
[laughter]
Item C two, under application. It's the definition of the caretaker on a 30-minute drive. I would recommend we change that to a mileage, a mile marker as it's very definitive. Time is relative based on time of day, traffic, weather conditions. I think if we said X number of miles away would be more definitive.
Certainly raises some issues for us, so we'll have a, we'll take a deeper dive on that type of limitation.
And the last item I had is just about the whole application process at all, and it, to kind of feed onto what Mr. Perkovich was saying about conditional use permits, should we, and this is more to the commission, should we consider some process of either these applications are made public or the adjacent property owners are notified when an application is put in so that the neighbors are aware that this property could become a short-term rental? And it's more of a, I'm asking the question as opposed to recommending to.
Applications and permits would be public records pursuant to Ohio Public Records Act. In terms of notification to the neighbor, you can include that, I suppose, just so they're aware of it, or perhaps some list can be published on a city website. I don't need to volunteer the administration in that regard. It's something that we'll get some feedback on. In terms of mailing a notice to the adjacents, I suppose that can happen, but under a strict permit basis, they wouldn't have any standing to object.
Okay.
Now, perhaps they could if there are private deed restrictions which prohibited properties in a subdivision from being utilized as a short-term rental. We do have those in the city of Mentor. Those are private deed restrictions. They're not something that the city would enforce. There are instances where as part of the application process, I've seen some codes that don't address that issue. I've seen some codes that have said that you need to provide copies of any homeowner's declarations or other types of restrictive covenants to the extent it prohibits this use. A waiver from the appropriate entity, the homeowners association, condominium association or something like that would have to accompany the application. So there's different ways to approach that problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Page three.
Chairman, I think in general, the application process, the more of these items that we sort of have spelled out, I think it really helps weed out the casual renter, for example. They've really want to do this and make sure that they go through all this stuff, so it somewhat helps with the self-policing and so forth and them wanting to do a good job because there's a lot of either, A, money and time involved in getting your permit as well as it being taken away if you don't adhere to some of these. So I think, I think we're in the, heading in the right direction, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Page three. All right. Anybody? Page four.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Mr. Crocker.
I think that already, it covers what you've already talked about, the renewal permits, D one, the grace period. Just bring that back up and say that, you know, hopefully it could be some type of grace period. Permits expire on December 31st lays out right there, so just wanted to reiterate that.
Four, all set?
I want one quick question. Was, we sort of touched on this already, but the, was the one-year permit, was that something that the city found was sort of a standard with most? Okay. If we extended that, I guess there's a risk involved in that, but that sort of would take care of some of that while we're booking ahead of schedule. But again, if that's somewhat commonplace, then that's fine, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Page four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Back on item three, under renewal permits, it talks about that 60 days, the permit holders have to prove that they've had a minimum of 60 days rental in a calendar year, five days average. Is the intent of that to say, look, you have a permit, so go out and make sure you're renting your house with your permit? Is that what, is that how I read that?
Yeah, you certainly want to deter, you know, a lot of vacant dwellings, you know? And so that is something that would be looked at in terms of, to see the repeat rentals occurring.
So now that you have your permit, we expect you to be renting this for a period of time during the year, is what we're saying, and not just be a vacant place. Okay. But of course, it could be the owners living in it for a period, too, so. All right. Thanks.
Page five. Under insurance, $300,000, that's state minimum. I think I ran a little Google search. So should we just refer to it as not less than state minimum? Because if it was to change to $400,000, if we just called it state minimum, it would be whatever that is. Mr. Teedman.
What would be your CGL policy? I mean, it's, I don't know, specifically for this type of use, you know, typical CGL for, you know, an office space is actually fairly modest cost-wise. I really don't know whether or not, if even a million dollars, you know, minimum would actually be that burdensome in terms of cost, but I would say $300,000, you wouldn't want to go below that.
Right. Okay.
So we're comfortable with the $300,000?
You know, to me, it's a question of business judgment. You know, we don't, we don't, as a city, warrant that the premises are free of all latent defects and things of that nature, so we just don't do that. That's not what your government does. The inspections would be, you know, are there smoke detectors or if required, you know, carbon monoxide detectors if required, fire extinguishers if required, secondary emergency egress perhaps, depending on where the bedrooms are located. So the health and safety issues are what the city would inspect. Again, if there's a latent defect, that could give rise to some type of premises liability. Should a person renting the facility be injured, that's a civil action. You know, again, would $300,000 be adequate, inadequate? I really can't say that.
I got you.
But if you're running a business and you have those concerns, you know, I advise all my new business clients, don't talk to your lawyer first. First person you talk to is your insurance consultant. The second person you talk to is a really great CPA, and then give your lawyer a call. I'm not giving legal advice to the public, but I'm just saying, insurance is incredibly important for businesses as well as for individuals.
Page five, guys? Anyone? On to page six. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crocker.
Under violations, item C, I was wondering if that, does that, so permitting the number of persons in excess of allowed under the short-term rental permit, so is that saying that you can't have somebody come visit? I mean, like if I had a rental here and wanted, you know, a couple to come over and have dinner that night, you couldn't come over? Is it no visitors? Is that what that's calling out? Because if it is, I think that's a little too restrictive. I think you ought to be able to.
I'm not.
Sure.
I think that's something that in terms of vetting this and making sure that it doesn't prohibit reasonable rental use.
Okay.
That's certainly a point of clarification that perhaps, you know, we could take a deeper dive on. I think the over, and Ms. Kentans Rida can chime in here a little bit, too, obviously, but I thought the overriding policy is making sure that the number of rental occupants does not exceed a reasonable number. On the other hand, though, certainly we've seen some headlines where a short-term rental has been abused by individuals with bad intent and used as, for a party or something of that nature. And obviously, you want to be able to address that behavior as well and make sure that doesn't happen. So I don't really know necessarily where exactly we can with verbiage address that type of circumstance and yet still be responsive to what you're indicating, Mr. Crocker, might be a reasonable situation where if you're in town, visiting relatives or whatever, they're stopping by to say hello, understand that. So not really sure necessarily how to, how to, you know, perfectly craft that language, but again, part of the reason for having this dialogue is to be able to address some of these practical nuts and bolts type issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, please.
Just quickly. So under standards, on page four, is the guest capacity limit. And so you have a guest, maximum number of short-term rental guests to be accommodated shall be equal to the number of bedrooms multiplied by a factor of two plus three additional guests. So that's where that, that number is. We also say that special events are prohibited, and under the definition of special events, a special event is a wedding, a party, a family reunion or similar gathering that exceeds the maximum number of occupants allowed. So there are some, you know, criteria outlined. Yeah, if you were to have one or two people over for dinner, I don't think there's going to be an issue, but if you start to have a party, I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
Right. Okay.
I think that's what everybody's trying to.
Page six. Are we good here?
Mm-hmm.
Page seven. The only thing that I had, M, evidence of a violation for the purposes of this section need to be only a de facto violation. A conviction of such violation is not a prerequisite for denial of the permit. Any explanation behind that? That, yeah?
Obtaining, this is a permit, so we're not trying to penalize necessarily in a criminal sense individuals who violate the permit conditions. We're looking at administrative acts. So there may be instances where, you know, frankly, obtaining a conviction isn't possible. We don't have witnesses necessarily we're going to testify. We don't necessarily know who to charge, but some behavior happened. Let's just say that, for example, there was a call and some type of a disturbance occurred. We may not necessarily know the responsible individuals in terms of criminal liability for the disturbance, but sufficient witnesses exist that it happened, so we can say that there was some type of disorderly conduct, whatever that might have been. We can establish that that behavior took place. We're not going to be able to necessarily obtain a criminal conviction unless we know responsible individuals, but nonetheless, we know something unlawful happened there, and that's the reason to sort of parse that out a little bit differently.
Okay. Thank you. Page seven.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Teedman.
Just letter H towards the top where it says, "A documented history of repeated conduct that endangers neighborhood safety." What does repeated mean? Is that two, five? I mean, if you're endangering the neighborhood, I think one is enough.
Again, a lot of this stuff is because, just sort of, you know, dovetailing off of my prior comments, we not, may not necessarily have enough to cite someone criminally or obtain a conviction. Likewise, some behavior may not rise to the level of criminal offense, but may nonetheless be problematic. What might that be? Some type of noise disturbance? I don't want to just throw things out here and limit the, you know, full scope of what those things could be. I'd suggest it's a little bit like a nuisance, you know? What is a nuisance? Well, it can mean many, many, many different things, and so it's always fact-intensive, in fact, specific. And again, you can do something once and it probably doesn't constitute a civil nuisance. When it becomes repeated, even if it's short duration, it could potentially be a nuisance. Or it may not be an extreme situation. It may be something which is fairly low-key and yet so continuous that it becomes a nuisance. So it's for those types of circumstances. I don't necessarily have a perfect example, and I would hate to publicly state a perfect example, even if I had one, because I feel like that might limit things a little bit. It's an administrative tool. It's subject to judicial review at the end of the day, and so certainly persons' due process rights will be protected if a permit is revoked for that type of, on that, on that legal basis.
Thanks.
Page seven. Anyone?
The penalty section will be further vetted. It's a copyright now of what we have in place, but, you know, when we, when we drafted this, we have to have further conversations with the law department on its applicability, so.
Okay. I know I brought up last time that men or residents should get the priority in, and I have to go back to it, that it's not men or residents only get a permit, that men or residents would get a priority, just like we do for anything else. You want to sign up for a camp, you want to, really anything. There's that period of time where a men or resident would get a priority over this permitting. Whatever the number is that we land on at whatever ward or whether it's citywide or wherever city council lands on that, I just feel like if it's, it's something for the men or residents, and if they, they'll generally live closer to the property. Now, I'm not saying men or residents only. I'm saying men are priority. And I don't know how we would, would they get a week head start to sign up for this? I don't, I don't know. But I know that's, that's what it's like for the camps, you know, the men or camp. I think they get like a week or two, and then whatever's left over, other people can sign up, non-residents can sign up for it. But I just feel like because the, you live in menor, you're paying the administrative fees for the inspections and all the paperwork and all this jazz that's going to go into it, that there should be some advantage that you live in menor and if you want to have one of these. I'm not saying menor only, and if there was some leftover permits. And I don't even, I can't even really come up with that process of how the application goes. I mean, we're just in, we're just starting this, but I'd like to see something written up like that. I don't know, is anybody else? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Crocker.
Yeah, well, and I think that would also be a benefit to the residents here because I know that if there was a short-term rental right next to my house and there was a problem, I would much rather have the owner-manager being like three blocks away instead of three states over. And I know we can't always make it that case, but if you gave them preferential treatment, maybe they'd be more of that. So makes sense to me.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that just has anything that's some ideas or anything? Anything, really? The floor is open here. Okay. So I'm thinking maybe we should table this.
Yep.
We may not see it on the next, I don't know how long this is going to take to do, but eventually, I mean, we just kind of have a working document here and just, just kind of get this moving. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to table.
Second.
Second.
Kathy, please hold on.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Teedman?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Stain.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Okay. Under new business, final subdivision plat for Menor Heights, phase one, to create 20 residential lots at 7343, 7391, 7411 Chillicothe Road. I see that applicant is here. Please come up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about phase one.
Good evening. My name is David Novak, N-O-V-A-K. My address is 9114 Tyler Boulevard, Mentor, Ohio. This, this is a project that actually started, I believe, in 2018, is when the rezoning for this project was rezoned to RVG, which is no longer a permitted zoning code, I guess. But it's taken us this long to, because there's currently an owner that is selling nursery stock out of the, out of the property, and he's finally decided he's done selling nursery stock. So what our goal here is, is to get this approved, start construction this fall, pave in the spring, and hopefully be selling lots in this development. This is a project that actually started, I believe, in 2018, is when the rezoning for this project was rezoned to RVG, which is no longer a permitted zoning code, I guess. But it's taken us this long to, because there's currently an owner that is selling nursery stock out of the property, and he's finally decided he's done selling nursery stock. So what our goal here is, is to get this approved, start construction this fall, pave in the spring, and hopefully be selling lots in this development sometime in the spring.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We've noted nine conditions with the first phase. I just would like to point out, you know, as Dave pointed out, that we've been looking at this over the course of many years, but it sat for a while. And when we were looking at the complete development, at the preliminary phase, we talked a lot about Chillicothe Road and how to treat the buffering and protection, which we'll see in the next phase. But we just, we kind of had an aha moment or a revelation that we wanted to discuss and just share with you. The preliminary plan talks about eliminating the trees, putting in a sidewalk, and putting in new landscape buffering. When you look at, and this picture really doesn't do it justice because it's so dark, but when you go up and down Chillicothe, there is just an abundance of mature trees, predominantly sugar maple. We had our arborists go out and look at them. They're healthy. There's nothing wrong with them. And so, you know, the thought was, why take out perfectly healthy trees? It's a mature buffer, which is what is always desired, rather than putting in something that's four and six feet high. And does there really need to be a sidewalk right there on Chillicothe? When there is no sidewalk on Chillicothe, there's the two bike lanes on either side of the street. So it would be our recommendation, moving forward, that that get adjusted. And again, we'll see most of that in the next phase, but we just wanted to share that that we did have some extensive internal talks, and we just think that that makes more sense for the development. And I think it would also make the property owner very happy, who, somebody who loves trees, not to take down existing trees that are perfectly healthy and provide the best buffer we could ask for. So that was just one big, big item. And again, we have nine conditions. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. And those are addressed in Condition Six and Seven, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman, I was actually just going to comment on that as well, so I think that was a very proactive step for the administration to notice that and recommend that. We always strive to, for example, make really nice-looking buffers, but this would get us that right away. I'm sure that that would, if they were to thin it slightly or at least limit up, they could add stock to it that might be more of some of the ornamentals. I think that is probably still a provision that could be addressed, but I was going to comment that that was a very good condition, those Six and Seven, as well as the asphalt multipurpose paths. We've sort of talked about that through the years, just so we don't end up with mulch paths. This is much more... So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
I do have a...
Sure.
... comment. And one of the other things, because this is a nursery, what we do plan to do is to take any of the leftover nursery stock and relocate it into the open space. So again, I think we'll end up with a very mature-looking open space. The only question I really had is, reviewing through the nine stipulations is actually number one. Because if you look at the map up on the screen there, that stub coming to the south is where they want us to put a temporary hammerhead. And we generally try to follow the Ohio Fire Code, which requires anything, when you go exceed a length of 150 feet, is where you would need to put this hammerhead, because the intersection, once it's improved, can work as a hammerhead if needed. And the distance from the center line of the one street, there's only 108 feet, so we're well below that. And again, hoping that, I believe this development is going to move rather quickly. The goal here would be, is like I said, is to start construction over the winter, this winter, be ready to sell homes in the spring, and then right after that, we would probably start construction on Phase Two. So it would really be a waste of, in our opinion, a waste of effort to have to put that hammerhead in.
Kathy? Any thoughts?
There was a recommendation that came from the engineering department, so...
Can we put a time in? Say if Phase Two doesn't start by X date, then a hammerhead has to go in?
Any objections to that, Joe?
Commission has the discretion. I do have a conflict of interest I wanted to point out, so...
Okay.
So yes, we could do a date, right?
Or like an approval date of Phase Two has to be done before a certain time, yeah.
Mr. Novak, when's your anticipated timing of Phase Two?
Again, I would think that we would be doing construction, start construction fall of '26, and be able to sell houses in spring of '27, because we can't pave the street until it warms up. So we would do the infrastructure and everything except for the pavement over the wintertime, just like we're going to do this fall, and be ready to sell homes in Phase Two early
So would that be a six-month timeframe beyond Phase One?
I would say, yes. Six months after the completion of the infrastructure for Phase One, we would be ready to do Phase Two. I think that's reasonable.
So if that stipulation was just amended on proposed condition number one about the hammerhead, which is add the stipulation that if Phase Two is not started within six months of Phase One...
The completion of the construction. Yes.
Of the right way.
Destruction of Phase One.
Phase One. The infrastructure, not the houses. Just putting the roads, the streets, the water lines, the sewers, all that stuff. Or you could say the filing of the plat, I guess.
So, John, could you maybe reword that again for the purposes of...
So that was... Six months after...
The completion of the improvements for Phase One.
Kathy, does the City of Mentor accept the roadway at one point? Like, once it's all done, completed, we could say six months from the City of Mentor accepting the roadway? Is that the plat? Is that when it's all the plat?
We, yeah, this is procedural, so I can address this. You know, the classic way, obviously, that municipalities have done it in the past, is it allows for plating, but it doesn't accept the improvements until subsequent dedication is made. Obviously, no one does that anymore, because you end up with paper streets, you end up with half-completed subdivisions. So what the City of Mentor does is, as a condition of plat recordation, it does accept the dedication, but it requires bond, so that should those improvements not be completed, the city can go in there, apply the bond, and complete the improvements. So when the plat is filed, it's, the dedication is accepted concurrently, provided the bond has been posted. No plat can be recorded. So that does not necessarily mean that those improvements are done, because we don't take dedication plaits, per se, in a two-step process, which is kind of the old way, and even the statutory way in which we still see it done in many communities. So the idea that it would be post-completion of the improvements, or the city engineer, I don't, you know, once they've accepted that the improvements are satisfied, they'd release the bond for that phase and move on. So I don't know, it's a...
So we could say six months, the temporary hammerhead shall be constructed six months after the completion of the improvements as deemed approved or accepted, as accepted by the city engineer?
Something like that, yeah.
You got it?
Yeah.
I think we got it. Go ahead.
Six months after the completion of the Phase One improvements. As accepted by the city engineer.
She's good? We good?
I'm good.
I think this is the last RVG standing.
We did the last two in the City of Mentor. This one in Glenbrook.
That's right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to...
Motion, oh, go ahead. Tell yours, John.
Motion to approve with the nine conditions, first condition being, excuse me, added to with the notations previously discussed.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Teedman?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the fourth.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.